Good evening. Thanks for coming to the City Council Chambers at 10 West State Street for tonight's City Council meeting. The day's date is November 28, 2022. The time is 5:30 PM. And I'm to read this call to order notice to the public that the mayor and council will welcome comments from the public during discussion of the items on the agenda. You have to step to the mic, state your name and address for the record, and limit your time to three minutes or less so others may be given an opportunity to speak. And all speakers shall clearly and shall speak clearly and direct their comments to the mayor and council in general and not to any councilor specifically. It's at the discretion then of the mayor and council to respond to those specific questions and comments or to have staff respond during the meeting. Would those who are able join us for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Very good. Roll call, please.
Hoop?
Here.
Isom?
Here.
Kel?
Here.
Lottie Hoff?
Here.
Schneider?
Here.
Thompson?
Here.
Walker?
Here.
Very good. Full house tonight. Time for mayor, council, and administrative comments. Any of the councilors wish to make any comments?
Your honor, if I may?
You may.
My family and others attended the holiday stroll, which was a bit chilly, but there was a heck of a good crowd up there and a lot of people had a lot of fun. It was nice to see the new courthouse as it's being done. And hopefully next year we can have a little bit warmer weather.
Thank you. Anyone else? Administrator?
None, your honor.
Okay. Nothing from me either. So let's go to the first item on the agenda, which is yours of service. But let's recognize them anyway. So we'd like to appreciate the 25 years of service, Donald Barker with the fire department, 10 years of service, Kevin Pantle with the sewer department, and five years in the housing department with Joe Trowbridge. Time for the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve it?
No move, your honor. I'll second.
Very good. Roll call.
Thompson?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Kel?
Yes.
Lottie Hoff?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Very good. Time to speed read.
Approve of the minutes for the November 14, 2022 meeting in the bill listing amount of $2,844,651.33. Approve the license renewal for Dave's at 207 East Main Street. Resolution 2022-310, setting a public hearing for the status of funding update for the Iowa Economic Development Authority Community Development Block Grant, Public Facilities Grant Program for the Elks Park Improvement Project. Resolution 2022-311, approving the Transit Division Equipment Purchase Contract by and between the city of Marshalltown, Iowa and Cyrride in Ames, Iowa for two transit vehicles. Resolution 2022-312, approving a home and community-based provider services agreement for with Molina Healthcare of Iowa, Inc. as the statewide managed care organization for transit rides covered by Medicare. Resolution 2022-313, approving the First State of Iowa NEMT Amendment Letter of Agreement with Medical Transportation Management, Inc. for the public non-emergency medical transportation. Resolution 2022-314, approving voluntary pre-annex agreement for 2236 Highland Acres Road between the city of Marshalltown and Glen and Lori and Ash. Resolution 2022-315, setting a public hearing for the Marshalltown Community Development and Housing Needs Assessment and Review of the Application for Head Community Development Block Grant, Doratio Disaster Funds. Resolution 2022-316, to approve a four-month extension of time to complete the city code upgrade grant work for 210 East Main Street. Resolution 2022-317, approving contract change order number 13 for the airport hangar terminal project, a decrease of $2,633.37. Resolution 2022-318, approving engineer's statement of completion and accepting construct, Inc. the airport terminal demolition. Resolution 2022-319, approving the annual financial report for the fiscal year ending 2022. Resolution 2022-320, obligating funds from the Urban Rental Tax Revenue Fund for appropriation to the payment of annual appropriation tax increment finance obligations, which shall come due in the next succeeding fiscal year for urban renewal area number three. Resolution 2022-321, obligating funds from the Urban Rental Tax Revenue Fund for appropriation to the payment of annual appropriation tax increment finance obligations, which shall come due in the next succeeding fiscal year for urban renewal area number four. Resolution 2022-322, authorizing the internal debt reimbursement to the tax increment revenue fund for the urban renewal area number two. Resolution 2022-323, authorizing internal debt reimbursement to tax increment revenue fund for urban renewal area number four. Resolution 2022-325, authorizing internal debt reimbursement to tax increment revenue fund for urban renewal area number seven.
Thank you. Is it just me or does the rest of you think she's gotten faster at this? On to item F reports. And the first one is for the Marsh Town Water Works improvements.
Good evening, and thank you for having me. I'm excited to be able to get you caught up on some of the things we've been working on at the water works, because there's a lot happening. I've expanded the topic just, just a bit. Jessica asked me to come talk about expansion at the water treatment plant. But what we've really been working on is I'll call it all three legs of the physical infrastructure and improvement of all of those things at the same time. So not only are we working on expansion at the water treatment plant, we're looking at expanding and protecting our source water and also working on distribution system improvements so that we can continue to make sure that the treated water gets to our homes and businesses in town. So all of those aspects, those physical infrastructure pieces are being worked on at the same time. I'm going to try and go over it all just at a high level. If you have questions, feel free to interrupt me. And then I'll spend a little bit more time mostly on the treatment plant since I think that's what most of your interest is in tonight. So with that, sorry, Shelley Lovell, I'm the general manager. I've been there. Actually, this is my fourth anniversary month or fourth year. This is my anniversary month. So I started in November 2018. So you'll see when we kick off and we get to kind of what's changed. I use 2018 as a, as a base year. So that'll make some more sense to you as we go on. An overview of the system. We have nine wells. We use groundwater. Some people think that we pull water out of the Iowa River. We don't. We have all groundwater sources. But I want to point out, because this is important, and we'll touch base on or touch on this a little bit later, well 15 is the workhorse. It's the newest well. It sits out probably a mile, mile and a half out from the treatment plant. And it can supply a fourth to a third of the water that we need on any given day. On a really high-use day, we need that well to make sure that we're keeping up with demand. We have a lime softening treatment plant with two 6 million gallon a day treatment trains. And I'll show you a visual of that that hopefully will be make it more clear rather than confusing. And it was constructed in 1977. We have over 165 miles of pipe out in the distribution system delivering water and four water towers. So this is that diagram that I said would simplify the treatment process for you. If you look at this from left to right, you're just seeing the nine wells, which I've kind of indicated with the larger one. That's our, that's our workhorse down in the lower left. Those nine wells are feeding two treatment trains. I mentioned that those are each able to treat 6 million gallons per day. So each rectangle is a treatment train. They're, they're identical through those processes. And then those trains both feed back into a pumping station and out to our distribution system, which is represented by that grid on the right. What I should mention is we are rated as a 12 million gallon a day plant with each of those trains able to treat 6 million gallons per day. But in reality, we, we have some limiting factors. When we actually try to hit 10 and a half to 11 million gallons a day for an extended period, we start to notice some, some reduced efficiency and, and quality in our finished water when we push the plant that hard. So it's rated at 12 million gallon a day. In reality, we're probably a 10 and a half to, to 11 million gallon a day plant. The, this is just a summary thing. There's a lot happening through those rectangles. And you might know that we do have award-winning water. We've won a number of state taste tests. And, and we want to keep it that way. We, I think everybody in Marshalltown raves about the taste of the water. So, so we want to keep it that way. So in 2018, when I got here, that was already the case. I'm not taking credit for that. When I got here, we had the lowest rates in the state for softened water. The average demand, meaning the amount of water that needed to be produced on an average daily basis is 6 million gallons a day. The peak demand was around 10. Again, we needed that largest well to meet the peak demand. The treatment plant capacity was hampered by mechanical failures. So if you go back to this, this diagram, there are a number of single points of failure throughout those rectangles that can make us lose 6 million gallons a day like that. And then we are limited to 6 million gallons a day until those repairs are made. I'm going to give my staff a ton of credit whenever we've had a failure. Any time of the day they work, they make it happen, they get that train back online. And it's, it's taken some, I'm going to say, near heroic efforts. A lot of hard work, creative fixes. Let me see what else I want to point out on here. The repairs and preventative maintenance that could help limit those events, a number of them can't occur because we have to shut at least one side of the plant down for an extended period to be able to make a repair. We can't do that and keep up with our peak demand days. So, so we have this, this balance of trying to take things offline long enough to make repairs or conduct preventative maintenance so that we don't have the surprises, yet also trying to predict when those peak days will be and, and make sure that we have enough water out there for all of our customers. We had some water tower inspections. We had the water towers inspected. We noticed failed coating on the interior of the south tower. The west tower, if you've ever driven by it, you know needs repainted. And much of the distribution system piping is over 100 years old, and we've got to get to work on that. So that's where we were when I got here in 2018. And it is always a challenge for public utilities to balance affordable rates and reinvestment in a, in your infrastructure. It's clearly time to do that, to start putting money into, into fixing a lot of these items. And my predecessor, Steve Sincox, had started with that. If you are familiar with the area out at the corner of North Center Point Road and Sand Road, there's a relatively new storage tank out there. And that was Steve's vision for where the next treatment plant would go. And that, that storage structure was built in anticipation of that. The, and it's, it's not just sitting there waiting for the next treatment plant. It was, it was designed in such a way that it's also of use to the existing treatment plant. So things had started. And when I got here in 2018 and started working with the board, it was not difficult to see that we needed to continue moving forward with these things. The objectives that, and not necessarily in this order, it's probably almost across the board as far as importance. The objectives that we had in mind were making sure there's reliability in water service, affordability, we maintain the quality, and we have the quantity that we need for customers.
Billy, I have a quick question for you. When we talk about the peak demand, what's the percentage of the year that you're hitting peak demand versus the average annual day? I mean, is that 10% of the time or?
Yeah. So it varies a lot through the year. I will say through the summer, it is probably, and these are definitely these kind of guesses, but through the summer, I'm going to guess 75% of the time. Through, through the off-peak months, which we're still, we're still pumping plenty of water right now. It's just starting to slow down. The off-peak colder months, I'm going to guess it's more like 20 to 30% of the time.
And would you say there's a, some major contributors that drive the peak demand or is that just seasonal?
We have, we have probably one user in our, in our residential customers that probably drive that, that changing peak. Alliant Energy uses quite a bit more water through the summer than they do through the winter. It's cooling water. In the winter, they don't need as much. So definitely summer is their higher use period. And then we residential customers use a lot more water in the summer because we're watering lawns, filling swimming pools, that kind of thing. We do have, our three largest users are Alliant Energy, the Iowa Rural Water Utility, and JBS. Yeah. Those are our three largest. The, the other two are pretty consistent through the year, as far as the amount of water they take. So improvement efforts in the last four years, things we've done, many of you will note, we've raised rates. Like I said, we had the lowest rates in the state for softened water in 2018. I think we traded places with one other town in one or two categories of use. With the four rate increases that we've had since I got here, we are still in the mid-lower half of, of the scale as far as in comparison to other, other softened water utilities in the state. We recognize the need to fund all these projects. So, so rate increases were necessary. We are working on increasing our source water capacity. We have a routine well rehabilitation schedule in place. And basically what happens, I'll keep this really quick, but when you use groundwater, you pull water through the pores, through the sands and gravels. And over time, over years, those plug up. And rather than invest in just drilling a new hole in the ground in a different spot, you can rehabilitate those and, and basically push an acid out to dissolve what's clogged those pores, loosen them up, and continue using that well for several more years. So we have a rehabilitation schedule for the wells in place. We are working with a hydrogeologist to conduct aquifer studies to make sure we know what our long-term capacities are in the aquifers that we're using. And we're searching for a twin to well 15, which is that workhorse. Like I said, we can't keep up with our peak capacity when well 15 is down. So we need, we need a, a twin for that one, for redundancy. We also had a master plan developed by Jacobs Engineering. And that's, that's the one I think that you'll, you asked me to come here and talk most about. So I'll come back to that. That has to do with the, the treatment plant expansion. So I'll come back to that in a minute. And then we've tried to develop a pretty aggressive water main replacement program out in our distribution system. We have moved all of our mapping from paper and, and kind of static CAD drawings to a GIS mapping system. We're working on growing our construction crews so that for a lot of the areas in town, we can do our own replacements rather than, than hire that out because we can get a lot more bang for the buck that way. We're working with McClure Engineering to develop a hydraulic model so that we better understand where the needs are, both for the piping and for our towers. We continue to coordinate projects with the city. And we've completed quite a lot in the last four years. We're working on more. Just some examples, we've replaced water main on May Street, Washington Street. We've got South Fifth and Sixth Avenue that we're currently working on. When I got here, we were just in the process of the replacement across the Iowa River on North Center Street. The interior of the south tower got painted. Now we have to move our eyes on to that west tower and figure out what we're doing. But we're kind of waiting on this hydraulic model to figure out. Is that west tower worth saving or do we need to replace it? So if you keep looking at it and wondering, why has she not painted that tower? I just, I don't want to spend money on, on doing that if we're going to find out that we just need to replace it shortly. And then you, you probably know we're coordinating on the State Street project. We'll lay water main when the city works on that street. Okay. The rest of this is about the treatment plant expansion. You ready for that one? Okay. So the master plan that we had conducted by Jacob Engineering, again, looked at things like that our, our plant is rated at 12 million gallon a day. They actually, in their study, said, now shall you really have more like a 10 million gallon a day plant? Like I said, we can, with some, some lost efficiencies, we think we can get 10 and a half to 11, but not for the long term, not for long periods. They saw demands of an average 6 million gallon a day and, and peak of 10.9. So our average hasn't changed a lot. Our peak has crept up a bit. They, as I've mentioned, identified and prioritized points of failure in the existing treatment plant. We've been working on those as we're able. So that includes things like just replacing valves and actuators, either replacing or repairing pumps and motors. Mixers need replaced or repaired. There's just, if you'd ever like a tour, let me know. There's lots of moving parts in that plant. We have maintenance people that are kept very busy, either repairing or conducting preventative maintenance, and they do a great job at it. But we do need additional treatment capacity for redundancy and growth. By redundancy, I mean, as I mentioned, if we lose 6 million gallons either to an unplanned event or so that we can take it down for, for repairs, we're down to a 6 million gallon a day plant. So we need, we need additional capacity for the redundancy. And as I've mentioned, we're, we're approaching our max capacity on this plant. If, if we want any more water, we need to build another treatment plant. So the issues that they addressed, questions that we needed answered, were related to, do we expand the existing treatment plant or do we, do we replace it? If we add on, what type of treatment should we use? We currently have a lime softening plant. Do we expand that or do something different? And then we had to look at costs and funding, of course. So when we looked at whether to expand or replace the existing plant, things we looked at were, one, that it would take several years to build a new plant, just like it's taking to build this expansion. It's basically a, a part of a plant that we're building, or I'll say a, a small plant that we're planning to build. We have to fix a lot of things in the existing plant just to maintain while we're building that next plant. By the time we get that done, we've got a fairly functional existing treatment plant again. Once we have another 6 million gallons a day to, to ability to produce another 6 million gallons a day, we can take a train offline, do all kinds of preventative maintenance that we can't do now, and keep that plant in service for decades. Again, in 2018, if you'd walked through, you might not have thought so. But with, with proper care, we, that plant has a lot more life left in it. Yeah. So, so we decided to move forward with expanding the plant rather than replacing it. We think it's worth saving. And then the next question that they helped us with was expand it to what? Are we going to add to lime softening? Are we going to do something different? We knew we wanted to maintain the quality because, like I said, people love the taste of our water. We need to make sure we maintain the compatibility with our industrial customers' uses. And we wanted to, we knew that we wanted to keep a softened water. Our groundwater, when it comes up out of the ground, has quite a bit of iron and magnesium, makes your water brown, yellow, stains your fixtures, stains your clothes. If we didn't treat it, it would be colored and also has hardness ions, calcium and magnesium and, and the iron and manganese, sorry, for the staining. So the treatment system that we have makes what comes out of the ground just a, a really high-quality product. So we looked at expanding the use of lime softening. But I will tell you, especially during the COVID time, this won't be the first time you've heard this, we have had some challenges with product delivery, whether it's our chemicals or some of our treatment unit infrastructure pieces. The, and then we also have a challenge constantly of disposing of our spent lime residuals. A lot of the farmers around like it. It's, it's a great soil amendment, but it takes a lot of land to keep, to keep disposing of this every year for land application. And it's expensive to do. Whereas membrane softening, if you're familiar with reverse osmosis, that's what we're, we're looking at for membrane softening. It removes those same hardness ions. We would have filtration ahead of it to still remove the iron and manganese that discolor the water. It uses a different set of treatment chemicals. So if we would have trouble getting everything we need for lime softening, we aren't just stuck in that, that, that one, that one pot. We've got another one that we can turn to that, that provides us some diversity in that need. It also gives us an ability that we don't currently have to treat for some emerging contaminants. You've probably heard in the news lately, a lot about this PFOS and PFOA, the forever chemicals. Lime softening doesn't remove that. Membranes do. And there, there will just be more contaminants coming down the line that are regulated, that reverse osmosis will be able to deal with, that lime softening couldn't. And it also provides for the ability to expand in a modular way. So we can build the 6 million gallon train. And then if we want, we can add another 2 million gallon, another four, another six. It's a, it's a very modular model or, or structure when you build these. So it gives us some flexibility in what we want to do in the future. So we opted to move forward with membrane softening. And what we'll do is blend that with the lime softened water before it, before it goes out into town so that we have consistent water throughout town. The cost estimate with engineering fees is around $38 million for this expansion. Funding sources we're exploring, our state and federal grants, a state revolving loan fund. And we're researching public-private partnership opportunities. We have entered into an agreement with HDR Engineering to continue moving forward, like I said, with membrane treatment and, and with this modular expansion to just expand on what we have. The, that's included. We, we were required, if we wanted to do this, to do a pilot study, which we completed in 2021. We basically set up a, a mini treatment plant for membrane treatment plant at our existing plant. And it confirmed the ability to treat our current source water with that unit. You need to do that because some, some waters don't like membranes, don't work well with them. The membranes foul or fail too quickly. It's too expensive to use them that way. Ours was a, a good candidate for working with membranes. We determined where we think the best location is for, for this expansion. I've got a few slides on that. And HDR Engineering has a design and, and site studies underway. And this is just really complicated. I'll, I'll show you some of the stuff that we're working with. I'm going to skip I'm going to skip ahead to, to the aerial photos. So at the bottom, the south end of the page, you can see our existing plant. Those lime lagoons are, are the pretty blue reflective ponds, blue and white reflective ponds that you see. And then up to the north, at the corner of Sand Road and North Center Street Road, that's that pumping station and storage tank that I told you that was built a couple, a few years ago, Ash Five. The area around the existing treatment plant, if you're familiar with it, you know that the Iowa River sits just south of it. It's actually in the floodway. To be able to expand around the existing treatment plant is pretty difficult. We're not what you'd call landlocked, but maybe waterlocked. If we build anything in that space, it's, it's really complicated and, and the, the difficulty in making sure that you don't backwater up onto your neighbors is a complicated issue. And also, we just put all of our eggs in one basket. If we have a big flood, all of our water treatment is in that floodway. Up to the north, where the SRT is, sorry, the Sand Road Tank, up at the intersection to the north, that's still floodplain, but it's quite a bit higher and removed from the river, so there's a lot less risk of flooding there. So things we looked at for location of the expansion would have been the existing site, which I showed you, the existing treatment plant area. Existing infrastructure being located there had pros and cons in that you don't have to pay for new infrastructure when you have existing on-site. On the other hand, it's on-site, and you'd have to move quite a lot of it. And so the challenge becomes, how do you keep everything running at the capacity we need when you're disconnecting things to move them? So for example, one of the things we needed to move was the raw water line, the line that carries all of the well water to the treatment plant. But while we were moving that, we need to keep producing anywhere from 6 to 10 million gallon a day. So having the existing infrastructure on-site at the existing treatment plant, like I said, had pros and cons. The floodway concerns I mentioned, to be able to expand on that site would have been ideal operationally. To be able to have staff working within that same campus would have been great. But those, those other issues were, were overwhelming concerns. To put that expansion adjacent to that Sand Road Tank, we have the benefit of the existing infrastructure. We're out of the floodway. Like I said, it's still floodplain, but much higher and away from the river, much less risk up there. We're near our source water because our nine wells actually run in a, in a line between those, the existing plant and, and that sad, Sand Road Tank. And it's operationally manageable. I, I tried to give you a, a mediocre there. You can't just walk out the door of one plant and in the door to the other. Somebody has to drive down the road, but, but you're in the same vicinity. Something I really liked the idea of was locating it in a completely different part of town. From a resiliency standpoint, that would be really nice. A tornado comes through the area, it's in a different part of town, one plant gets hit, the other one doesn't. That, that seemed ideal to me. So the resiliency that would give would be great. However, we don't have source water, haven't identified source water anywhere else in town. We've been looking. It isn't that it isn't there, but to find it and have it be the quality that we're looking for, we haven't found that spot yet. And even when we do, it will be very expensive to develop it. And if we can just use the footprint that we have for our source water and continue to expand, it would be a much more effective and affordable way to do that, rather than build another well field. And no existing infrastructure. There isn't any place else around our distribution system that has the size of piping in place to be able to deliver, to deliver 6 million gallons a day from a treatment plant into the system like we have up at the north end of town. And this one, I gave the, the highest ranking as far as challenges go. Operationally, we would need to run two sets of staff, definitely, if you had things across town. So, so we chose to look at building up in the area adjacent to the Sand Road Tank. So I mentioned that this has been a complicated engineering project, or it is. We have to deal with floodway issues. There's all kinds of soil testing we have to do to make sure it can bear the weight of these buildings. When you have, when you have buildings full of water and sand and concrete, you can't just build it on the top of the ground. So we've had, had a lot of studies that way. We have to conduct environmental reviews. We have been looking at, like I said, at, at what our source water opportunities are for the future. So it's, it's a pretty complex engineering program. Just a close-up on the existing treatment plant for you. And this is that Sand Road Site, and you can see the white rectangle is that existing storage building and pumping station. And so that field area, the green around that is the area that we would start building on and filling in. And while I said we're only planning on 6 million gallon a day, the other thing I've asked the engineers to do is to make sure that if we want to go all the way out to 18 million at this site, does it fit? I, I don't want to, and, and I want to build to make sure we're not accidentally or unintentionally limiting ourselves today for what we might need to build down the road. Schedule that our engineers have proposed, and I can tell you it's already moved, but not by much yet, has this expansion completed in December of 2025. They had initially proposed spring of 2026. I said, no, we, this is getting out too far. And they said, okay, we're, we're trying to be realistic. Supply is an issue right now. Getting electronic controls is an issue. Finding contractors is an issue. And so what they told me is we're trying to be realistic about what that will take, but we understand, and they have been working like champs to try and make this move through as fast as they can for their part, for the design and planning stages. They were supposed to have the 30% design submitted to me November 22nd. That's been moved to December 2nd, 10 days off. But that is beyond their control. They had submitted it to regulatory authorities for review, and that's taking longer than anticipated. The Department of Natural Resources has authority over this project. And, and when I tell you that we want to go with RO, we want to put it up at the Sand Road Site, we want it to be 6 million gallon per day, that's all, they, they review that and they tell us whether that's a legitimate concept. So we're waiting to hear back. When we get this next bit of feedback, which should be any day, and when, when we planned this meeting, I thought I would have, have that response by now, we'll, we'll know for sure that we can continue to move forward with that plan as it, as it's laid out so far. You don't want to keep going too far past your 30% mark before you know that that basic concept is going to be approvable. So I think that's all I had. Have you got any questions for me?
I do. What, what makes number 15 the rock star among the wells?
That's the well. You may have heard about it. I think that Leon Lamer did a nice job of, of telling people about it years ago when it was drilled. They drilled down into the bedrock. I think it's around 150 feet deep and they, this, this is, the geologists will tell me it's not luck, but they can find cracks, they can find fissures, which move water nicely underground, but they found a mother of a crack, the mother of cracks. They found a big cavern that holds a lot of water and gets filled easily. We can pump 3,000 gallons a minute out of that well. It, it is just a very high-capacity well that doesn't seem to have future capacity limitations. We don't see, one of the things you look at when you run a well is how much does the, the top of the water get drawn down? So for example, if you're drinking a milkshake, you kind of see an indentation at the top. Same thing will happen in an aquifer. This thing doesn't drop. It's got a lot of water coming in pretty quickly. Sometimes that's a concern because you think if water's moving that quickly to that space, does it have adequate travel time and filtration to make sure that any contaminants have gotten filtered out? We just, we don't see any quality problems with it either. We, we monitor all of the wells pretty closely. It's good quality, wonderful quantity.
Questions?
Your Honor, if I may?
You may.
Shelley, great presentation.
Oh, thank you.
And I like how you did that, where you showed the options and how you came to the conclusions you did. I've got four quick questions.
Okay.
I may have missed this one at the beginning. What is the storage capacity in all the water towers and then the ground storage tank that you built on Sand Road?
So the ground storage tank, I'm going to have to add these up one at a time, Gary. So I've got 2 million at the ground storage tank. We've got 2, 2.8 in the towers total. We have 2.8 million gallons, sorry, in the towers. We have 700,000 ground storage at the treatment plant. We had another 2 million gallons in those reservoirs that you see just on the north side of Iowa River, but those were taken offline just because they're, they're old, they're, they're falling apart. You, you can't, you can't keep them sealed anymore. They needed to be taken offline.
So basically, when you shut down one of those trains, the water towers could be, you don't want to do this, but they could be run dry would give you the day's use then.
And so-
So in worst-case scenario, you could run off-stored water.
So for a few, probably, a day would be, what I will say is a portion of a day, only because, like you said, you, if you run dry, you've basically lost all your pressure. So I do have a minimum that I say you can't drop below this point. So we don't really want to plan to ever be offline for more than eight or 10 hours.
Yeah. And then you said you need 38 million needed to, for the construction. How much is in your bank account now towards that 38 million, you know, with all these sources?
Yep. So what I will say, what we have to put toward this is very little. One of the things we've done is built up our reserve. So if we keep our operating reserve at about 12 months, it's about $5 million, we have $5 to $7 million in our account. So we have a couple of million dollars. But it's not, it's, we have so many more projects than what we have money for right now, Gary.
So realistically, we should expect a couple more rate changes-
Rate increases?
-re-increase in the next two years?
I think that's true.
And then what do the engineers say the life of the aquifer is?
It's, I don't have a number yet. I haven't, the studies that we've, we've completed so far, we, we haven't been given a limitation. That's a good thing. They haven't said, ooh, in X years. What they do instead is say, for, for the one, the areas further south, closer to the treatment plant, closer to Asher Creek, they've said, mm, maybe one or two more wells, Shelley, and then you should stop. You'll, you'll be at capacity. That keeps you from running out. And now there's another kind of buried channel further north and closer to that Sand Road Tank that we're also going to have evaluated and try to answer the same question. What can we pull out of there and not pull it out faster than what it can be replenished?
Well, I think it'd be reassuring when you get those numbers to tell the public that, that aquifer is going to support Marsh Town for another million years.
That would be, I would love to deliver that message, yeah.
Okay. Now, the most important question that people ask me, why'd you cut down all the trees?
Oh, we didn't, we didn't really cut down as many as were blown down. It emptied it out quite a lot, just taking out all of the broken trees after the derecho. But what I will also tell you, and I'll try to make this a fast story, we lost well number 15 with the derecho because we had an overhead power line, the trees pulled that down. We were on a generator out at well 15 for several months. And that meant driving fuel out to that generator constantly, hoping that that generator, it's not as clean of a, of a power source as electricity. And every once in a while, it throws, it throws little curves at the, at the well and it shuts down. It took constant care and feeding to run that well while we were waiting for that electrical line to be rebuilt. Our maintenance, facilities manager, it's in charge of maintenance, he said, Shelley, I want to get all the trees away from the power lines. So we have cut down a few that, that threatened infrastructure. But most of it, it looks ugly. It was really clearing out a lot of the stuff that broke.
And that's, that was my not-knowing answer to people, that you were just cleaning up like everybody else was.
Yeah.
But I wanted you to say that to everybody tonight.
Yep.
Thanks, Shelley.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it. Thank you, Your Honor.
Welcome. Anybody else up here?
Your Honor, so the 38 million is for the next 6 million train, the, the build-out of the capacity. What would, with the modular construction, what's the next 6 million price take roughly?
That depends on when it is. If, you know, if we go, if we go 20 years this way, prices will be completely different. If we go 50 years, it'll be completely different. It just really depends on Marshall Town's future and growth.
Okay. So maybe a better way is 38 million gets a 6 in 2025. What would 12 be?
So what I'll tell you is a ballpark that I was given by the earlier engineers was around 100 million to completely replace. The, and, and that would get you to an 18, not 12. The other challenge or problem, though, is we're not allowed to build or to use that 2% loan money for speculative growth. So we can only use that loan fund to bulk up what we have. So when I tell you that it is completely for redundancy, that makes us eligible for that loan fund. It also, when everything is running fine, sets us up nicely for growth. But it's with that same idea. If one of the lime, lime trains goes down, we're back to a 12 million gallon a day, which at this time is great. And, and for the foreseeable future, the additional 6 gives us some room to play.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Your Honor? Following up on that, I mean, is there discussions about, you know, modularly adding it? Will it be another whole effort or is this kind of in the plans? Is it set up to add more to it since it is modular?
No. And that, that is one of the things that we've talked about. For example, I asked the question, how much more would it cost to build the building as big as it would need to be if we wanted to be able to put 18 million gallons of stuff in there? And you would save some money if, for nothing else, just the, the inflationary issues potentially coming in the next 20, 40 years. But you always get, get, you know, if you, if you build a bigger house versus the, the same 4,000 square feet and 2,000 square foot houses, you're going to save money. So, so I don't want to suggest that that's not the case. But what our engineers have told us is that, that just would not be advisable at this time because we do think that this next treatment plant, or the existing treatment plant, could be fine for, we're guessing a little bit, but I'm going to say ballpark 30 years, give or take 10. And, and so to say you know that what we should build in 30 or 40 years, we should spend some of that money today because we think we know what it's going to be, is, is stepping out quite a bit for the amount of money that it would take. But to answer your question, when I say it's modular, it's another building. So it isn't, it, it is just kind of creating mirror images of what we have. The existing storage structure would continue to be used. Everything that, I think I mentioned earlier in the presentation, that's one of the questions that I've asked the engineers is, don't let us design something that keeps us from adding something, and I want you to tell me how this would all fit if we want to put it all on this footprint so that it can all be built out to 18 million gallon a day, if that's where we decide to go. And so they have lots of little mockups of squares and circles drawn around that plot to make sure it can fit. But it is, you look at things like, if we make it a few feet wider, is there a chance we can squeeze things together just to get another 2 million gallon a day? So we have those conversations to try and make sure we're getting the most out of the footprint that we're building today.
Okay. Thanks so much for coming in. Keep the pedal to the metal. We need the water. And I'd like to hear more updates, so.
Sure. And like I said, the, the offer's open. If any of you want to walk through, give me a call and, and I'll take you out to the site. Okay?
Anyone else?
Very good. Thanks for the report.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. On to item G, resolutions. What's our first one to discuss?
Resolution 2022-326, authorizing and approving a loan agreement providing for the issuance of $9,555,000 in general obligation corporate purpose bond series 2022A and providing for the levy of taxes to pay the same.
Understand a motion?
The move, Your Honor.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Discussion.
Diana Steiner, Finance Director. This is for our tax-exempt general obligation bonds, which will, will be used for our projects such as streets, parks, trails, sidewalk gaps, and parking lot. The purchaser of our bonds is First National Capital Markets out of Omaha, Nebraska, at a true interest rate of 3.7958%.
Thank you. Comments or discussion up here? Comments from the public? No call.
Schneider.
Yes.
Thompson.
No.
Walker.
Yes.
Hoop.
No.
Isom.
Yes.
Kel.
Yes.
Wadihoff.
Yes.
Carrie, on to number two.
Resolution 2022-327, authorizing and approving a loan agreement providing for the issuance of- providing for the issuance of $610,000 in taxable general obligation property restoration bond series 2022B and providing for the levy of taxes to pay the same.
Move for approval, Your Honor.
Thank you.
Second.
Discussion.
Diana Steiner, Finance Director. This is for our taxable bonds and it's for the projects for the dangerous and dilapidated buildings. The purchaser is Northland Securities out of Minneapolis at a true interest rate of 5.0321%.
Discussion or questions up here? Public comment? Roll call.
Walker.
Yes.
Hoop.
No.
Isom.
Yes.
Kel.
Yes.
Lottie Hoff.
Yes.
Schneider.
Yes.
Thompson.
No.
Carrie as well. Uh, it seems like, you know, there's not a lot of discussion, but we, we addressed this at the last meeting and had Spear Financial here to talk about the rates they were able to get us, so. Just in case somebody hasn't been keeping up, that's what happened the last time. All right, resolution number three.
Resolution 2022-328, approving the annual street financial report for fiscal year ending 2022.
Motion for approval, Your Honor.
Thank you.
Second.
Discussion.
Diana Steiner, Finance Director. Let me make this a little bit bigger. Okay. So since we receive road use tax dollars from the state, um, as you know, when you go to the gas pump, you, uh, pay a tax between 24 and 30 cents, depending on what, what you're buying. Um, that money plus vehicle registrations, um, is collected and then it's allocated out to cities and counties, uh, primarily by census. So, um, once a year, they request that all the cities and counties submit this report and explain where it got spent. So, um, there's several categories here. Funding sources, the general fund, road use tax, other special revenues, debt service, and capital projects. So under the general fund, um, there's almost 1.1 million dollars that is spent for salaries. So this is your, um, Public Works Division. And then their benefits. And then, um, liability and property insurance is the 47,000. And then you go to the actual road use tax fund. So we receive almost, uh, well, we did receive 3.8 million dollars in fiscal year 22 for road use tax. We had budgeted 3.4, so we're happy that it came in higher. Um, so, oh, just one person's salary, uh, clerk that's part-time there at Public Works. And then, um, other expenses, operating expenses, utilities, um, equipment, that type of thing. So, um, that's what that column is. And then we have other special revenues. So that is, uh, some tax levies because we levy for the pro, for the benefits tax, which we then transfer to cover in the general fund. And then we also had some, um, tornado expenses, um, from four years ago for the road construction. Uh, we did receive that money in, during fiscal year 22, so that's reported there. And then debt service, uh, there, that covers, um, our bond payments for Olive and Madison Street. And then capital projects. So these are where our bond money sits. And the, the projects related to streets. So that's expenses and the revenue. And then the next page is the bonds, which I just discussed with you. Um, some of these are starting to fall off now. Um, so we'll continue to see those go down. And then equipment needs to be reported. So in theory, if there was a nat, if there was a natural disaster, um, if Marshall Town needed a certain piece of equipment to clean up, they could go out to this, um, data collection center and see what other city they could borrow equipment from. So that's what gets reported on this report. We did have a few new purchases this year. So for $158,000, we purchased a Caterpillar motor grader. Actually, two of those. And then one international dump, with dump with plow spreader and pre-wet system. So those are the last three listed on that. And then they also want you to report what street projects you actually completed 100%, which means the final retainage. And that was, uh, the project of East Merle Hibbs Boulevard, that extension. And then this page is just a summary of where we started out, the beginning of the fiscal year for fund balances related to streets, um, our expenses, our transfers out, our transfers in, and our revenues. So you can see the road use tax fund went from 5.6 million up to 6.3 million dollars. Again, we know that there's delay with, uh, construction. So, um, are there any questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Hey, further discussion up here? Otherwise, out there? Roll call on this one.
Kel.
Yes.
Lottie Hoff.
Yes.
Schneider.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Walker.
Yes.
Hoop.
Yes.
Isom.
Yes.
Very good. What's our fourth resolution look like? Carrie, by the way, what's our fourth resolution look like?
Resolution 2022-329, approving the master services agreement for automated traffic enforcement surface, services with Census GATSO Group.
Floor is open.
Motion for approval, Your Honor.
Thank you.
Second.
Discussion.
Chris Jones, Captain of Police Operations. And I'm, we are seeking from our department in the city of Marsh Town, seeking a contract with Census GATSO, uh, Group as part of our automated traffic enforcement program. Um, some of the highlights from the contract that was drafted with Lynch Dallas along with, uh, city leadership and, uh, Census GATSO, uh, would be a five-year contract. Uh, they would cover all initial expenses, uh, and maintenance costs and provide us with, uh, back office, uh, software and training to be able to implement this program. We are, uh, going to look for options. And we're currently looking at options within our community where we can best, uh, use the equipment. Uh, right now, the contract is for two, uh, fixed area, um, camera systems and then also a portable system that can be placed in areas where we have special concerns. I'll be open for questions.
Okay, time for questions or comments.
Your Honor, I have one. So the, the contract for terms, five years. Obviously, if we start with two and one from a mobile unit perspective, is there an ability, I'm assuming pretty easily to amend that if we decided to do more or revert back, I guess, to a lower number or get rid of a mobile unit? Is how much flexibility is in there in the contract to add or reduce?
There's a lot of flexibility to increase. Uh, the reduction would need to be a mutual agreement between Census GATSO and, and the city of Marshall Town. They had reassured me that they would be open, uh, as long as it was, it was mutually, um, agreed upon.
Are there council questions?
Your Honor, I just, not so much a question, but a, a comment. I really appreciate the time that you gave to this and, uh, the good conversations that we had as a council and, and with your police department in trying to find a way to keep Marshall Town, um, safe and, um, really reduce speed across the community. Thanks.
Thank you.
Your Honor, if I may?
You may.
Hey, Chris, um, the last time you were up here, we, you know, there were some questions that were asked. And, um, with your conversations with, uh, Census Gas, GATSO and other communities that they serve, what is their remediation process for when these tickets aren't paid?
Well, we're currently working, uh, with Census GATSO about taking a look at some of our options for collections. Um, we have worked with Lynch Dallas, uh, Miss Kinzer, uh, and, and taking a look at different options for unpaid citations. Uh, what I can, um, guarantee from Census GATSO is there's no, uh, extra charge or charge for unpaid citations. They're only, um, looking at processing paid citations. And anything, um, that goes unpaid would be really our discretion on how we wanted to handle that process. And we're currently looking at the most efficient and affordable way to do that. Obviously, there's some expense to collections. And we're working through some of those options to make sure we're doing it, uh, efficiently.
And did they give you data on what percentage? Because I'm assuming they're in several communities nationwide, I'm assuming. So did they give you data on, on what percentage goes unpaid?
Most of the percentages start around 75% and they can go down between 50 and 65% after time, uh, depending on how aggressive we are with collections. And if we, uh, make it known that we are going to go after offenders for non-payment, then obviously those numbers go down. And that, and that would be 70% paid, yeah.
The numbers were paid?
Yes.
Yeah. Thanks, Chris. Thanks, Your Honor.
Other council questions? Public questions? Roll call.
Hoop.
Yes.
Isom.
Yes.
Kel.
Yes.
Lottie Hoff.
Yes.
Schneider.
No.
Thompson.
Yes.
Walker.
Yes.
Very good. That carried as well. Uh, Hughes Street would be a nice place to have one of those fixed, you know, just saying. Uh, next resolution.
Resolution 2022-330, approving contract change order number five for the Box Culvert Project number SMW20003, an increase of $7,620.
Move for approval.
Thank you.
Second.
Very good. Discussion.
Good evening, Heather Thomas, Public Works. Um, in front of you tonight is change order number five. It is an option on the Box Culvert Projects. Um, this stemmed from a public comment at the October council meeting. Um, at that time, and still to this day, the railings that are installed out there have not been accepted by the city and no payment has been made. Those are in process. Um, and so the pictures that were shared at that time, and I've included a couple of them that I've taken in this memo for, for everybody's reference, um, are an in-progress installation. Um, during installation on these railings, there are three sections. One that parallels the road and then two wings. The measurement and distance in this center section was a bit longer than what the concrete head wall allowed. The project engineer during construction allowed a field change of shifting where that was placed on the head wall. And so that change allowed them, instead of being directly in the center of that center section, it shifted to where these anchor brackets were on those wing walls. Doing so resulted in this worst-case scenario that you see here of the very end of it hanging off those, uh, wing walls. That is not a finished product. They were going back to the shop to fabricate brackets to come in and, and get those all attached. Um, at a council member's request, um, we've gone back and requested a price from the contractor to come back in and look at what it would take to shorten this center section that would allow all of those to be brought back up. Um, and in one of the three locations of the railing, it would also shorten the end sections. Uh, that price is $7,620 and that's what's on the table for you today for consideration. Again, this is an option. It is not installed. The brackets that were cut are not acceptable and they've never been acceptable. Those will be ground and repainted in place, um, with either option. Um, leaving it as is, um, it would result in that. But doing the new option and approving change order five would cut those base plates off and put back the, the four-by-four squares that were there. Um, so this is, uh, an option for you to consider and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Your Honor, so if we do not approve and we move forward and getting, moving forward, what happens then?
Yeah.
What's the, what's the product look like?
Right, we proceed as, as was approved in the field by the project engineer. Um, these base plates that you see here and that I've kind of zoomed in here, um, these are going to be cut off and ground and repainted. Um, there are certain brackets that require an additional attachment. Um, you can see on this one, it's a little hard because the, the dirt is black also, but there's already been a bracket installed in this one here. This bracket is attached to the concrete, uh, wing wall. There are brackets, um, and anchors that go through. Uh, this particular picture here, this one is actually a grade-two bolt. That's not acceptable. They need to replace that with something that was specified. Um, but for the most part, you will see brackets like this attaching, um, it to the structure and all the rough edges ground and painted. Yep.
Can you go up to the, the, one of the initial pictures that shows kind of that overhang?
Right.
What is that? What happens with that?
Yep, they have two options to remedy it. Um, the one that they were leaning towards prior to the comment, um, in October is they have a six-by-six post, um, that they were manufacturing in this location that will actually be attached to the concrete wing wall and that this will sit on top of. Um, that was the route they were heading. Um, because Lennox, this is, this is on Boone Street, um, is bringing in some, uh, chain link fence that will attach kind of and go to this area, um, they've also been given the option to shorten it at the joint and, and bring this on and, and put it on to the concrete head wall. And I don't know which way they would go, but both would be acceptable.
Your Honor, if I may?
You may.
Uh, just as a comment, can we just do this right to begin with? I mean, let, let's make it look nice to begin with. Uh, trying to save $7,000 and then it looking kind of hokey. That, that just doesn't work. Let's go back and make it look nice for the neighbors.
Your Honor, if I may?
Yes.
So Heather, I want to confirm, what is the cost? It's not just this one on Boone, it's all of them, right?
The $7,620, uh, is the total cost for all three that have this type of, of issue. That would be Boone, Nevada, and Marshall Drive.
Okay, so are they taking these completely down and taking them back to the shop and redoing them in the shop and then bringing it back out to the field and installing them properly per what, uh, Councilman Lottie Hoff said?
No, there are field methods that they will be taking them down in the field, but they will stay on-site. The modifications will be made on-site. Uh, due to temperatures, um, we understand some of the, the paint touch-up and, and those types of things with DOT methods will have to wait till spring.
So let me understand this right. If this was an outside contractor hired by the city that made this decision or made this mistake, we would litigate damages and withhold pay? But since it was your department, we're not going to withhold the salary from somebody to cover the cost of this change, right?
That is not correct. This railing is a pedestrian safety railing, not a vehicular, um, guardrail. Um, we do allow all of our, um, engineers, whether they are in-house staff or consultants, to make, uh, engineering sound judgments. The approved method that was, allowed the shift and allowed brackets to be used, whether that was in-house staffer or outside consultants, uh, would be supported by me, um, in either, in either case.
In hindsight, wouldn't it, would it been acceptable just to bolt it to the sidewalk where it would have fit in front of the wing wall?
I can't answer that question because I think it's different depending on which spot you are. There are some locations I think that the sidewalk width may have allowed that, um, but not all of them.
I guess I second what Councilman Lottie Hoff says. Someday, this city's got to stop accepting secondhand work. You know, if we, we really want to be the city we want to be, it's got to be made to the specifications. And unless you can assure us, assure me, that these infield changes are going to be invisible to the naked eye.
Which we, we all can acknowledge they're not.
Thank you, thank you, Your Honor.
You're welcome. Anyone else at the council level? Anyone at the public level?
Just a confirmation. So if this does not pass, we'll be proceeding as originally planned?
That is correct.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you.
Down back to-
I need clarification on that. If we don't pass either one of these options, what's happening?
Um, the only item on, in front of you this evening is change order five, which is, results in shifting and changing the dimensions of the railings. If that does not pass, we will proceed with the field authorized change of, of grinding the plates and providing the bracketing. That is a no cost.
Then you're going to come back to us with the final acceptance of this project and we can refuse it at that time? Is that correct?
It would be accurate that we will come back and request for completion of the project, yes.
So we, based on the public comments that were made, we brought this back to you for you to consider because if you want that change, the time to do that is now, not when the project is completed and basically coming forward to you. So this is the point in time where if you want to see the railings redone, this would be the, the change order to vote yes to. If you are acceptable with the field changes that Heather has described, voting no to this resolution will keep- If you are acceptable with the field changes that Heather has described, voting no to this resolution will keep things on the path that is happening.
I don't want the brackets and I don't want the field change. I want the, I want it made correctly in the shop and put on these wing walls. No, this is the field change.
Change order five would be modifications to the railing.
In the field?
In the field. Correct.
You're going to be doing a specialized painting in a natural environment rather than a controlled environment. So, we're going to have rust on the welds. We're going to have rust on the plates. This is going to look like the Center Street biodoc when we tried to brush paint it years ago, thinking that was going to be appropriate.
The painting methods that would be used for this are DOT-approved methods for, for this type of an application.
I guess I don't want it band-aided. I want the message sent to you and your staff and everybody in Marshalltown. We get what we pay for. We want it done right. That's my position. So, if I have to vote no on this change order, then make a motion to go back to the drawing board and have you redo them, that's what I'll do. And it may or may not pass, but...
For information purposes only, because it's not the item on the agenda. Initially, when we reached out to the contractor to request pricing for them to take the railings off, take them back to the shop, we were looking at sixteen thousand dollars. Total.
I think it made it pass a public comment, but let me try it again. Okay. Roll call.
Kel?
Yes.
Lottie Hoff?
No.
Schneider?
Yes.
Thompson?
No.
Walker?
Yes.
Hoop? Isom?
Yes.
That carried. Onto the next resolution.
Resolution twenty-two, three thirty-one, approving contract change order number three for the Airport Hangar Terminal in-Site Professional Services, an increase of twelve thousand five hundred dollars.
Motion for approval, Your Honor.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
Discussion on this one.
Yes, CGA is requesting additional engineering fees and at this time, for the Airport Hangar and Terminal Project. And at this time, we are recommending that these not be approved.
Discussion up here. Public discussion. Roll call.
Lottie Hoff?
No.
Schneider?
No.
Thompson?
Yes.
Walker?
No.
Hoop? Isom?
No.
Kel?
No.
Number six failed. Onto number seven.
Resolution twenty-two, three thirty-two, approving contract change order number four for the Airport Hangar Terminal in-Site Professional Services, an increase of fourteen thousand dollars.
Move for approval, Your Honor.
Thank you.
Second.
Discussion.
Same comments as the last item, that CGA has made a request for additional engineering fees for professional services and staff is recommending that we do not approve this.
Time for council comment or questions? And time for public comment.
Time to vote.
Schneider?
No.
Thompson?
Yes.
Walker?
No.
Hoop?
No.
Isom?
No.
Kel?
No.
Lottie Hoff?
No.
That one failed as well. Our next one.
Resolution twenty-two, three thirty-three, approving contract change order number fourteen for the Airport Hangar Terminal Project, a decrease of five thousand five hundred dollars.
Motion for approval.
Thank you.
Second.
Thanks. Discussion.
Yes, this is basically a negotiated liquidated damages with garling construction for the Airport and Hangar and Terminal Project, which was based on actual losses related to rent from Marshalltown Aviation. And so, we are recommending approval of this to basically resolve all outstanding items with garling and move forward with closure of the project.
Thank you. Council comments or questions? Public comment. Roll call on this one.
Thompson?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Kel?
Yes.
Lottie Hoff?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Very good. That carried as well. Next one is a public hearing, it looks like. What's that about?
Public hearing and resolution twenty-two, three thirty-four, providing for the conveyance and transfer of title to a portion of vacated but unconveyed alley to nine eighteen South Eleventh Avenue.
I'll declare the public hearing is open at six forty-four PM. Do we receive any written comments in the clerk's office?
No, Your Honor.
It is time for public comment on this one before staff review. Anybody in the public wish to comment on it? Time for staff review.
Yes, this is cleaning up a conveyance from the nineteen-fifties where a quitclaim deed was issued for a portion of an alley adjacent to nine eighteen South Eleventh Avenue, and it was never recorded. And so, this is providing the ownership record with that and ensuring that we have the proper procedures in place to be able to record a deed now.
Now, it's time for council comments. Any council who wish to comment?
Your Honor, if I may?
You may.
Jessica, what was the dollar figure attached to this?
I don't know a nineteen-fifties dollar figure of what the original conveyance was at this point because there is record of the prior conveyance. We are not recommending charging the current owner as they were not a party to that original agreement.
But they are the people that will benefit from having this ownership.
They're already benefiting from it.
Might have to mow it or shovel it. Any other council comments? Public hearing is closed at six forty-five PM. Is there a motion to approve it?
So, move. Second.
Roll call.
Who was the first?
Yeah, did you get the first?
Two motions, two seconds.
Oh, yeah. Go with the age.
Okay. Kel?
Yes.
Lottie Hoff?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Hoop?
No.
Isom?
Yes.
All right, that one carried as well. And on to the next public hearing.
Public hearing on the development agreement with Marshalltown Central Business District, Inc. for the facade improvement program.
Well, that public hearing is open at six forty-six PM. Did you receive any written comments on this one?
No, Your Honor.
Public comment time. Nobody's rising. Oh, sorry. Yes.
Uh, Your Honor, I'm not sure if I'm the one that I want to talk about. Is this item eleven? Is that where we are?
Nope, we're number ten.
Sorry.
No problem. But you did what you need to do, which is stand up so I can see you, and then we can get the public comment at that time. Let's go on to staff review.
Yes, this is an annual agreement that we bring forward, authorizing tax increment, incremental taxes from the downtown urban renewal area to support the code incentive grant, which is basically the facade and code compliance grants for the MCBD. This amount is fifty thousand dollars for the fiscal year that starts July first of twenty-twenty-three.
Now, time for council comments, if any.
Your Honor, if I may?
You may.
I think we've seen great success with this program. And as much as I hate TIF, this is a great use of TIF funds.
Thank you. Anyone else at the council level wish to speak on that? All right, public hearing is closed at six forty-seven PM. Entertained a motion to approve it?
Move for approval.
Thank you. Is there a second? There we go. Roll call.
Thompson?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Kel?
Yes.
Lottie Hoff?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Carried. Onto number eleven, another public hearing.
Public hearing for the Marshalltown Community Development and Housing Needs Assessment and Review of the Applications for HUD Community Development Block Grant, Diratio Disaster Funds.
Public hearing is now open at six forty-eight PM. Did you receive any written comments?
Yes, Your Honor. I received a written comment from Tom Wortsberger of eight oh six West Merle Hibbs Boulevard, asking the council to oppose this resolution due to the city's role as a developer competing against the private sector and also questioning the appropriateness of creating four lots on South Sixth Street with modular homes negatively affecting the neighborhood.
Very good. Thank you. I know I received a copy. I assume the seven consuls did as well. I'm seeing heads shaking, yes. And that is now putting us in time for public comments.
Your Honor and members of council and employees, I'm Karen Berger of eight twelve West Merle Hibbs Boulevard, and it's times like this, I wish my name wasn't Karen, but we'll just move on. Okay. I'm very concerned about the proposed four houses in the twenty-five-hundred block of South Sixth Street. When that land across from us on West Merle Hibbs was first sold and was going to be developed, I did a little research. That was supposed to be cottage homes. I did some research on what cottage homes were, and what we're seeing is not the vision that I had. Since then, we learned that there's no sewer to those four lots, and it will cost three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, I've been told, to put in the sewer to those four lots. And then, the housing that was supposed to go in is the, basically, like, mobile homes. I don't think that to put in that kind of money, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, to build four houses is really worth it. I understand it's grant money, and just because it's grant money, if I'm correct, that doesn't mean we don't have to be good stewards of it, and I don't think that's a good use of the money. I don't, one of the things, what I, I read about cottage homes is they have to be neighborhood-sensitive. I don't think those proposed dwellings are neighborhood-sensitive. The houses right to the west behind it are selling in excess of three hundred thousand dollars. A bigger concern I have is just the fact that Sixth Street is just becoming very, very heavy in traffic. I had called in once before, before the new hospital opened and talked to Mr. Nickel at the time, and I was assured that there's no way we could get any traffic flow devices there because we didn't have enough traffic. We didn't meet the criteria, three out of ten things that the federal government requires. Now, that street is just ambulances all day long. And it's very, getting very difficult. I counted one day last week. After, I counted up to thirty cars that I waited to pull out, and then I, there were so many coming at once, I kind of lost track. So, I just gave up at thirty cars. That's a lot of cars to wait for. There on Sixth Street, there's a little bit hill coming from the north down. It could be a blind corner. It could be very difficult to pull out there. So, I just have a lot of concerns about it. I don't know if we've done our proper research on it. I don't think that the cost justifies four-building lots. I think that, is it the role of the city to be in the business of developing houses? Is that the city's job? Are we actually, as a city, supposed to be doing that? Or is that the role for private contractors? So, anyway, those are, I guess, just the things I want to point out. The heavy traffic, the cost, the role of the city to even be developing land if the proposed houses are neighborhood-sensitive to the type of houses that already exist in that neighborhood. I think that concludes my remarks.
Anyone else from the public wish to comment? Okay, that takes us to, oh, sorry?
Marty Wymore from Region Six Resource Partners here in Marshalltown. As part of this public hearing, there are some requirements that the Hugericz Project needs to say to the public. So, they're proposing to do three projects here in Marshalltown. One is approximately eighteen-hundred South Seventh Avenue, and they're proposing to build thirty-three units there comprised of twenty-seven two-bedroom and six-three-bedroom units. Fifty-one percent of these units would need to be rented to households under eighty percent of the median, according to HUD. The estimated construction budget is around five-point-one million. The CWG request, which is the grant share, is about two-point-nine-nine million.
What point of order, Your Honor? Are we off-topic here?
No.
No, this is Jermaine.
Yep. The LMI benefit here is estimated at one million five hundred and twenty-four thousand nine hundred. So, the current estimated rental rates are seven fifty-five for the two-bedroom units and eight hundred and seventy dollars for the three-bedroom units. So, that's one project. The other project is Hugericz Holdings LLC at fifteen L one South Seventh Avenue. This project includes six townhouse units. Again, all of these units would have to be rented to households under eighty percent of the county median. The budget is about one-point-five million, and the CWG request is eight hundred and sixty thousand. The estimated sales price at this point, which is subject to some change, is a hundred and twenty-five thousand for the non-accessible units and one hundred and seventy-four thousand five hundred for the accessible units. The third Hugericz project is Hugericz Construction Company, and they're also proposing six townhouse units at one oh six North Fourth Avenue. The project budget's about one-point-five million. The CWG grant request is eight hundred and sixty thousand. The City of Marshalltown has a different set of application numbers. I will let the city staff, I guess, review those numbers as well.
Yes, thank you, Marty. So, the city is proposing two projects for the community development block grant, Diratio Disaster Funds. Project one includes seven infill lots owned by the city, scattered kind of through the northern and the eastern parts of the city. The total project cost is estimated at one-point-eight-two million, with the community development block grant request at one million fifteen thousand dollars. Project two is consistent of two parcels with one that would be subdivided into four additional lots. These are both proper, or both properties that have, the city has purchase agreements for but does not have ownership at this time. And so, for the five total lot projects, it would be a one-point-seven million total cost with one million five thousand dollars to be the project cost. To talk about what the city would be procuring for each of these sites, as we will have to follow a procurement process, would be a twelve-hundred to fifteen-hundred square-foot modular home based on the lot size. Just to be clear, modular is not manufactured. Manufactured is mobile. Modular is not. This will be a required two-bedroom, one bathroom as a minimum size, but we'll seek larger homes for the larger lots that we would have. These homes will be placed on a basement with an egress window to allow for future renovation and will also include a garage with determinations based on attached or detached based on lot size and availability. Per the grant requirements, all of the homes will meet basic accessibility standards. All will have mitigation improvements, which is part of those grant dollars that are included that will provide for a fortified roof standard to be met, which is wind resistance in roofing. All will have a whole-house generator to provide for backup power in case of a disaster-related event. And all will have stormwater management solutions on-site, such as permeable pavers, rain gardens, and bio swales. And so, that is the summary of the two projects proposed by the City of Marshalltown.
Thank you. Michelle Spahnheimer, Housing Community Development Director. In addition, as part of this hearing, we have some other things to cover. One of those includes going through the housing needs assessment, which is part of the grant requirement. And so, there are several things that we talk about when we talk about housing needs in our community. And so, we're just going to touch on those, and then certainly if there are others that the council wants to make sure we note as part of the public hearing, we want to capture those as well. The state does ask that we cover three primary items. The first one being community development and housing needs for low and moderate-income residents. We've identified several different housing type of needs, and this has kind of extended over the years as we've done housing needs assessments. Senior housing continues to be a need in our community. Housing throughout our community for low and moderate senior residents, both new facilities as well. low and moderate, uh, senior residents, uh, both new facilities, uh, as well. Even with some of our tax credits that we've done, we still continue to see demand for senior housing. Affordable rental housing, uh, in our community is also an ongoing need, um, for low and moderate income residents. Uh, we do have some newly constructed, uh, the Marshalltown Lots Project, uh, with new fifty-unit complex, um, and it was almost immediately, um, leased, uh, or close to being fully leased. Uh, so we still need a continuing need for affordable rental housing as well. Uh, for-sale housing, uh, so our owner-occupied housing needs for low moderate income, uh, also is a high need, uh, in our community. As we have seen with our disasters, the impact on, uh, owner-occupied housing in our community and some of those losses, we know that there's a continued need for, uh, new housing, uh, to be developed, um, at, at all income levels, but specifically under this topic for our low and moderate income needs. It's harder to develop new housing, um, that is affordable, and so that is one of our biggest challenges in that owner-occupied network, um, niche field. Uh, housing rehabilitation also is an ongoing thing. We have, uh, been working on housing rehab, uh, projects for, for years through whether it be our CDPG owner-occupied rehab programs that, uh, we have worked with Region Six on, um, or directly through the city. Uh, also, our lead hazard control program is a rehab-type of program as well. So we know that those are continued needs for our existing housing stock, uh, to be maintained. Uh, homelessness is also an issue which, uh, we have identified that affects our low and moderate income households. Um, our community, uh, knows that we struggle with homelessness and near homelessness, um, and work, uh, the lack of emergency shelter. Uh, housing is definitely an impact on our community. That's something certainly we just talked about at our recent, uh, strategic planning that the council addressed. Uh, and then, uh, another, uh, addressing item for, um, our low moderate income is, is park improvements and kind of quality of life issues that, uh, address communities in, in the neighborhoods, and having access, um, to, uh, those type of resources within the neighborhoods is, is an ongoing, uh, thing that we look at as a priority. Uh, the second item, uh, deals with community development and housing needs specifically more for non-low and moderate income housing residents, so really all of our residents. Um, some of the things that we've addressed in here include our downtown rebuilding and revitalization. Obviously, following our disasters, we know that we have existing buildings and infrastructure. It's important to keep those vital within our, within our community and our commercial districts. Uh, infill projects have been a high priority and will continue to be one, uh, many of those being mixed-use projects, especially in our downtown. Uh, housing development, uh, in general, we know that new residential subdivisions, uh, continue to be a priority for, uh, housing, uh, development, uh, areas, including the Glenwood Park area that we have been working on, some of our newer, um, rental housing, uh, developments, uh, as well. Uh, those, uh, that have that market rate is an important piece in housing development across the board. Uh, as we heard earlier today, water capacity. We know that water capacity is an important, um, uh, priority within development, um, on all levels, and so we want to continue to support that and recognize the importance of that. Uh, and then industrial development is also one that drives to our community development and housing needs. Obviously, employers, uh, and employment base, we need housing to support those employers, um, and we want to make sure that we are, um, encouraging development of industrial properties. The third item to address is, part of the needs assessment includes planned and potential activities, um, to address those needs that we, uh, previously identified. Uh, for housing development, you know, we continue to work with developers, um, and stakeholders in our community, uh, to encourage new housing development, to encourage rehabilitation of housing, uh, and pursue funding when available. Certainly, these fundings through the CDPG program for the derecho is very limited, uh, in the communities that are eligible to apply, Marshall County being and Marshalltown being one of those, um, limited funds. We often do work with other housing projects through the state and work with Region Six to try to secure those, um, on behalf of the city, uh, it, through CDPG projects such as upper-story housing and rehab projects that the city has been the applicant on. Uh, that goes to the housing rehabilitation. Uh, as I mentioned, we also work with the Region Six Housing Trust Fund to work on owner-occupied housing rehabilitation projects. Those two are geared towards more of our low and moderate income households, um, and administer, we do administer, uh, the lead hazard control program, which I referenced earlier. Um, for our park improvements, we continue to work through our capital improvement plan to address park improvements, uh, for addressing the populations and neighborhoods, um, throughout our community. Downtown rebuilding and revitalization, uh, as you're all well aware, we've, uh, continued to try to secure funding, uh, as, as possible for downtown revitalization, um, much of that coming through the state, um, for different, uh, types of progress, projects, um, including like our shared wall activities, the Main Street Challenge Grants, um, the upper-story housing, uh, projects as well. Um, we will continue to work on the infrastructure projects such as State Street and, uh, Main Street, uh, working through, um, the proposals for redevelopment of our city-owned properties in the downtown, as we've been working with our brownfield grants, um, which I will talk more about, um, later tonight. Um, water capacity, again, just kind of recognizing the Marshalltown Water Works and their efforts, um, to continue, uh, to improve the availability of, of water, um, service to our community to meet those needs. Uh, in industrial development, uh, we have projects moving forward, including the Edgewood Industrial Park, uh, and, uh, consideration for site certification, um, of property as part of an industrial, um, uh, projects moving forward, and we work closely, of course, with the Chamber, uh, to move those projects forward. And so I just needed to cover those items as well, um, as what Marty and Jessica have, uh, previously noted as part of this hearing, um, uh, to move all of these applications related to the CDPG derecho, uh, special funding, uh, forward. I know that was a lot. Entertain any questions.
Thank you. Any other staff review?
Thought we were having public comment.
Oh, I, um...
Sorry if I'm out of order.
(inaudible).
Okay, okay.
Yep.
So, Mark Eaton, ten-oh-seven South Tenth Avenue. The city has acted as a contractor before, and those projects have not met with much success. Um, the city has over five-hundred-and-eighty-some low-income housing, uh, units. Um, there's a lot of money that follows poor people. The community development block grants have ten- and twenty-year contracts, or terms for low-income housing. The more low-income housing that we build, the lower the average income of the city becomes because we fill it up with low-income housing people. So, uh, also, a lot of the programs that, uh, Michelle has talked about, lead grant and, um, housing refurbishing programs and all that carry with them money which flows into the, um, housing and, um, department, which pays for her salary. Thank you.
Public comment? Continued.
I did not come here to come up and talk, just to observe. This is the first time I've ever been here. This is Julia Feld, at twenty-six-ten South Eighth Street. So my property would back up on those four lots, and they do. Could we consider a green space? We have kids that go and play ball on that lot. They fly kites. There's activities that go on. There are no parks in that area, and we're gonna develop No Way. There's all these new lots and housing going in, families going in, and these kids would benefit from having a green space where they could go and fly their kites if they want the neighborhood kids to get together, someplace to go to. Just an idea. I see a lot of activity with kids and everything that they take the opportunity to, a big space. It's fun to get together and do stuff, so I think that would be a bigger benefit than developing lots just because we need to put more houses somewhere. So, that's my opinion. Thanks.
Thank you.
My name is Ted Williams, and I live at eight-oh-eight West Merle Hibs Boulevard. And, uh, I, the, the thing that I would question about this project is, it seems like it's, uh, it's just like, it's, you're trying to get, this is not the place for a low-income housing grant because it's very expensive. I mean, the, the private sector hasn't built houses on, on those lots for a long time. I don't know when they've, how long they've been available, but it seems like this is kind of trying to, you're, you're going upstream. Um, if you want low-income housing, you don't start out with a, with a project like this where you got three-hundred-and-fifty thousand just for the sewer. I mean, I, I just don't get it. There may be parts of this that I don't understand, but, um, you know, that is kind of a little relief to, uh, somebody call it a green space. I think that's, I think it has value that way. Maybe there's ways that, uh, to go beyond a green space. But when I look at that and I see four of these modular homes, you're gonna have to have a street, and you need sewer? Um, I mean, I don't know. I, I, to me, that just doesn't work out very well. And I, the other thing too, a lot of this, a lot of the things we're concerned about here are just our own, uh, property, uh, property values and what, what could happen to them. I think we're already under stress with all the, the stuff going on, on, um, uh, Merle Hibs Boulevard, and this would just seem to, the traffic, right, at that, at that point, I, I'm sure you all drive through there, so you know what I'm talking about. And especially now with all the, with all the ambulance traffic that we're getting. So, uh, uh, thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else?
My name is, is Jerry Gazaway. I'm at eight-sixteen West Merle Hibs Boulevard, and, uh, I reiterate, uh, one of the things that's, uh, most difficult already, and it's getting worse, is the traffic factor. It really is, uh, uh, you can say what you want, but I'm an old man, and we old people probably aren't always as alert and able to react as others, seriously. And, and I think that's an area that you need to keep in mind. Another thing is, I'm an old playground equipment salesman, so I'm not gonna try, is the Park and Rec director here, I'm not trying to take the Park and Rec director's spot. Oh, there you are. Well, we know each other. I used to call on him, uh, when he was up in the decor area. Um, but that, that has possibilities of being an opportunity for a, a nice, uh, park area over in our area because we are parkless, and it would be a positive for, for the, uh, the city and, and for the kids. So, I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Uh, mic is still open for public comment? Seeing no one else rising, let's go on to staff review then.
The, uh, housing needs assessment that Michelle read was the staff review, essentially.
Okay, and, and Marty's, um, comments were required to, as well. Okay. Council comments, time.
Your honor?
Yes.
Uh, I completely agree with my constituents. This is not a good place for the development proposed. Um, while I do think that Marshalltown has a place in some development opportunities, I don't see this as being one, and I remain a hard no. And I ask my counselors to come alongside me in that.
Thank you. Other council comment?
Your honor, if I may?
You may.
Yeah, I agree with Councilman Walker. Um, the lot specifically on South Sixth Street, on that hill crest there, is just not the place to put four houses dumping four cars out of there on top of that hill. I think it's just a, a prescription for problems down the road. No pun intended, but, um, I just don't see that. And I also don't like the idea of the city being a developer, and I've said this all along. If the housing shortage in Marshalltown is so great, then people should be beating a path to our door to build houses. We don't need to be the developer. And I would question, one of the things that Michelle said about the fifty units at what I call the Green Monster by my house, um, being filled so fast, I'd like to know how many of those fifty were filled from people moving out of older, you know, low-income housing into that brand-new building. I don't think it, the higher percentage was people coming to town or, you know, moving in there. I think it's just, it's just flight from the poorer, low-income housing. So I don't, again, you know, we're saying the demand's there because that building filled up, but it's not. It's not. I don't think it's new people coming in. And I'll have to talk to, um, the manager there and find out, but again, city being a developer, no. Um, let's sell the lots. We should not be in the business of owning lots and building on them. Let's put those lots on the north side of town back on the market and see what happens. Thank you, your honor.
Welcome. Other council comment?
Your honor, um, I agree with Gary and Dex. Uh, wholeheartedly oppose the development on Sixth Street. I just don't think it's the right area, traffic perspective, many other reasons. Um, also, I think city staff could be better spending their time setting up new development areas and doing other work rather than managing the development and construction of houses.
Anyone else up here?
Your honor?
Yes.
Just a few comments. I don't know that if we think housing is a good or bad idea along that stretch that it makes sense for kids to play along Sixth Street. Um, so while a good idea, I don't think it's the right opportunity. That being said, don't want houses on there, but we have multiple entrances, both driveways and apartment complexes that both enter onto that street. So I, again, don't think that's a good argument. Secondly, we talk about diversity in housing. We're doing things on multiple different levels. The space isn't gonna have a three-hundred-and-fifty, four-hundred-thousand-dollar house built on it. I think this is a good use of otherwise useless space and a good investment, uh, into the community from a housing need that we continue to talk about. So, while I hear you, Gary, um, if we don't spur some development at a city level, there's, needs to be a little spur, a spike of momentum or spark of momentum, and I think this is additional piece into some of the other activity that we've already done. Um, I don't know, looking at some of the pictures and some of the options in there from a housing perspective, what's gonna go in there. By my first house off of South Ridge, I don't think this is out of place by any mean, shape, or form, especially when you sit there and talk about the apartment complex directly across the road. So I will be voting in favor of this. I think it meets some of the strategic direction we set in our plan, um, which is what we all voted to, to do, and while it may not be the right place for some, I think it's the right thing for Marshalltown.
Other counsel?
Your honor, if I may?
You may.
Um, this is kind of a tough one for me because, um, I hear what Councilman Thompson says. Uh, he said, you know, people ought to be beating a path to our door. The reason that they're not building, uh, beating a path to our door, especially into the infill housing, is because there's not enough profit in it. There's really not. Uh, the profit is getting a big piece of ground and putting up three, four-hundred-thousand-dollar house. Houses like this that we do have a big need for, for low and medium housing, uh, are far and few in between for people. Um, I have talked to the manager of the, what'd you call it, the Big Green Monster or something? Yeah, except it looks gray. Okay. Um, and a lot of people are moving in from out of town, and, uh, I believe she said they had, they had five units left. And even if people do move from other properties, what we're doing is we're cleaning up some of the, uh, lesser landlords, let's put it like that, and making them maybe sell the properties and turn them into just regular housing again. Just because people are moving from one area doesn't create, uh, doesn't mean it doesn't create an opportunity for the next people coming in. So that also helps, and it also helps keeping down rent. Um, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna vote yes on this. I mean, it, it's a tough one on the Sixth Street. I understand that. Um, I think Jeff also, we have a Parks Master Plan, and I really don't think that that lot is any part of that. any part of that, of the Sixth Street for the Park and Rec Master Plan. And I think the houses will feel a lot nicer, I really do. They're not gonna look like a trailer house.
Your honor. So to my recollection, we haven't seen any drawings or any designs yet. So everything we're talking about with type of house is very speculative. We've seen ideas or suggestions, which is what Gabe talked about, but that's not the final product. What I am hearing tonight and via correspondence on email is not an argument against the build-out in the properties, it's an argument against the people. Because if you look at this grant, the maximum selling price is $175,000 with a $100,000 state grant. So these are $250,000-plus houses, which would fit relatively in that area. Again, across the street from an apartment complex, I looked, a two-bedroom there is $760. These people have to qualify for a mortgage and pay a mortgage. So we're not saying no to a building property. We're saying no to the type of people that will potentially go into this property. And that's not meeting the community where we are. It's wishing we had a different clientele and a different product. So for that, I'm going to vote yes.
Your honor, can I respond to that?
You can.
I just, I don't agree with the assertion that we're voting against people. I think Karen and other neighbors, neighbors made some very sound arguments regarding the traffic in that area and the value of the other homes immediately behind it and what they're selling at and the risk of diminishing those prices. I will continue to vote no, but it is not on the basis of appropriateness of a person.
Other council comments? All right, let's declare the public hearing is closed at 7:20 PM. And call a roll.
So the first resolution on this matter is Resolution 2022-336 of support for Project One and Project Two of the City of Marshalltown, applications for community development block grant disaster recovery funding for infill-for-sale housing.
And since we've got two resolutions under the same category number 11, we better make sure we know which, which we're, what, which ones we're voting on for this, Project One and Project Two. Would you clarify?
The, the first resolution, Resolution 2002-2336, is for Project One and Two of the City of Marshalltown for the Community Development Block Grant Disaster Recovery Funding for Infill-for-Sale Housing. So this is just for the city projects. The next resolution is for the other projects that Marty spoke about.
Gotcha, okay. Everybody else understand that before we call a roll? Well, let's call the roll.
Needing a motion?
Oh, still moved? Need a second?
Second.
No, let's call the roll.
Lottie Hoff?
Yes.
Schneider?
No.
Thompson?
No.
Walker?
No.
Hoop?
No.
Isom?
Yes.
Kel?
Yes.
Okay, that resolution failed. And then what is the second resolution under this category?
Resolution 2022-337 of support for the Huggerich Construction Company, HCI 50158 Investment LLC, Huggerich Holdings LLC, applications for the Community Development Block Grant Disaster Recovery Funding for Infill-for-Sale Housing.
Still move, your honor.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call on this one.
Walker?
Yes.
Hoop?
No.
Isom?
Yes.
Kel?
Yes.
Lottie Hoff?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
And that one did carry. On to the next public hearing.
Public hearing on the development agreement with Marshalltown Company.
And I'll declare this public hearing is open at 7:23 PM. Did you receive any written comments on this one?
No, your honor.
Time for public comments. Seeing no one's, oh, do you have some?
Your honor, council members, I'm John Criston, Senior Director of Operations and Engineering at Marshalltown Company. We were in here, I think it was last November, to go through kind of the details. I won't do a big presentation like that again. Just same, same agreement, working on storm sewer improvements in our next design phase and expansion that we're designing right now. We'd like to do the work of taking out that Eighth Avenue and Lynn Street Road, do the infrastructure for stormwater underneath that while we're doing that next phase of construction. And then we would cover that cost, but then I think the agreement explains how it would come back to us in, in, in funding, tax, tax funding or TIF funding later on. So definitely something we're still interested in doing. We got a little busy over the summer in a large acquisition and filling up that first phase, so we're just back asking for that to be approved. Thanks.
Very good, thank you. Any other public comment about this one? How about staff review then?
Yes, John did a very good summary that this was a conversation that started about a year ago and then it carried over into new council members being seated in 2022. And in March, we ended up approving a resolution, kind of committing to some general terms which are in your packet tonight in the form of a development agreement. And so this is a rebate of not to exceed $2.9 million in incremental taxes over a 10-year period to help aid for stormwater improvements as well as cover the tax abatement portion that Marshalltown Company would be receiving on a phase that has just been completed and is new to the tax rolls this year as well as the next phase. And so we are moving this forward right now because they did get their, their most recently completed project assessed with a January 1, 2022 value, which means we want to collect on that, collect the increment on that in this next year.
Thank you. Council comments?
Your honor, I've got a couple of questions for John, if I can ask him to come up to the podium. John, we, we, the ones who were here last year, we enjoyed that presentation, you and your sidekick and, but I have to say, I'm a little disappointed, John. You hired 150 down in Arkansas. You just didn't bring those jobs to Marshalltown. You know, we did all that work for you and this is the way you repay us. My question is, how do you answer that before we vote yes on this one?
I think if you look at the, the numbers that we've added in, in Marshalltown since, let's call it 2020, percentage-wise, we're up as good. They do have a, a large hourly staff down there. We have quite a bit larger salaried staff up here. But we have added to that. I mean, I run the factory, even our factory staff is more than twice what it was in 2020. So we're growing as fast as we can. We'll continue to add, add more.
Joe wasn't here for me to pick on, so I had to pick on you, John, so thanks.
Wasn't it a 10,000-square-foot addition?
It's 40,000 square feet going into Arkansas.
No, I mean, up here.
Up here. The next addition will be probably in the 50,000 to 60,000. Probably about 40 of that is factory. And then we've got a pretty good new employee entrance, break room, locker rooms, so kind of some finished space for, for employees on the south end.
So, your honor, so John, all kidding aside, what's your timetable on this next phase?
You know, it, it kind of depends on how, how much, how quickly we fill up this one we're currently in. We're getting close. In our head, we kind of figure on finishing design, kind of early 2023, starting construction 2024 is probably when we'll do that phase.
Thanks, John. Thanks, your honor.
You're welcome. Yeah, interesting. I think we're still at council, let's see, staff review, council comments, any other council comments? I'll declare the public hearing is closed at 7:27 PM. Entertained a motion to approve the resolution. Move for approval.
A second, do we need to read that resolution, please?
Resolution 2022-338, approving development agreement with Marshalltown Company, authorizing tax increment payments and pledging certain tax increment revenues to the payment of the agreement.
Thank you for that. Roll call.
Walker? Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Kel?
Yes.
Lottie Hoff?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Carried, and then let me have you read the second resolution under the same category.
Resolution 2022-339, obligating funds from the Urban Renewal Tax Revenue Fund for appropriation to the payment of annual appropriation tax increment financed obligations, which shall come due in the next succeeding fiscal year for urban renewal area number two.
Move for approval, your honor.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, before calling the roll, for those of you who are participating tonight, but really were interested in only one topic, you don't have to stick around. We don't find it, you shouldn't be embarrassed to leave. And I'm happy to have you stick around, but I, I've watched people sit here for two extra hours when they didn't need to, and I wanted to let you know that. Time for the roll.
Your honor? Your honor, anyone named Karen should have to stay, though.
You know, I've never known a Karen I didn't like. It's just an unfortunate thing.
Schneider?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Kel?
Yes.
Lottie Hoff?
Yes.
Very good, that carried as well. Onto item number 13, another, another resolution that does not require a public hearing, and it's our last one of the night.
Resolution 2022-340, authorizing certification of Code of Iowa 403.19 tax increment financing indebtedness to the county auditor for each urban renewal area within the City of Marshalltown for fiscal year 24.
Still move, your honor?
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion.
Yes, just so, to provide clarity around what this is and why it's the last thing is because we just approved the Marshalltown agreement to get on to this certification. And so it would have been a little weird to have you approve this at the beginning of the meeting and then hold the public hearing afterwards. So this is what we are certifying to the county, which is legally required by December 1st of each year for each of our urban renewal areas. This includes development agreements that have been in existence for a while, as well as new development agreements like Marshalltown Company, as well as some different administrative costs that we've incurred over the last year as well that we are seeking reimbursement for. And so that is what you see in urban renewal area number seven. There is no increment there yet to collect on, so we won't, we won't have a certification of, or an annual appropriation certification for Carl for probably another year or more as they actually build the property and create the increment. So we're certifying our costs with this approval to make sure that we set the base value as to what it was prior to their building. So this is standard procedure. There's nothing too exciting or interesting about this, and this just wraps up all the other actions that you've taken tonight related to tax increment financing.
I don't know, I find it kind of exciting myself. Council comments or questions? Any public comment? Roll call.
Schneider?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Kel?
Yes.
Lottie Hoff?
Yes.
Carried as well. Onto item H, ordinances. What's our first one of those?
Ordinance 15053, to amend the Code of Ordnances, City of Marshalltown, Iowa, Chapter 117, Junk Dealers and Palm Brokers, third reading.
Move for approval.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Council comments? Public comments? Roll call.
Kel?
Yes.
Lottie Hoff?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Thompson?
Obstain due to a conflict of interest?
Walker?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Very good, that carried as well. Next ordinance.
Ordinance 15054, to repeal Chapter 152 Housing Code of the Municipal Code of the City of Marshalltown, Iowa, and to adopt by reference the 2021 International Property Maintenance Code with amendments, second reading.
Move for approval, your honor.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Discussion by council or public? Roll call.
Isom?
Yes.
Kel?
Yes.
Lottie Hoff?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
All right, that carried. Next and last ordinance and last piece of business we can vote on tonight.
Ordinance 15055, to amend the Code of Ordnances, City of Marshalltown, Iowa, Chapter 70, General Provisions to Provide Regulations for Automated Traffic Enforcement, first reading.
Doors open for a motion to approve it.
Move for approval.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion.
Captain Chris Jones, Captain of Operations for the Police Department. As part of our automated traffic enforcement program, we drafted an ordinance that was in compliance with current state law and using other communities and other ordinances that have been proven in litigation, came up with an ordinance for your review and approval.
Questions or comments from the counselors? From the public? Let's call the roll on this one.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Kel?
Yes.
Lottie Hoff?
Yes.
Schneider?
No.
Thompson?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Carried as well. Officer Jones, thanks for all your work on that automated enforcement. And I know on the last vote that we had too about trying to control people that steal things and tried to pawn them off illegally, a lot of work went into both of those things, and we appreciate that. Nice to see it come to fruition. All right, discussion items, first one is the downtown site furnishings.
Thank you, your honor. So a few months of work has, by a number of individuals, including Deb with the MCBD, Alicia, Michelle, Heather, myself, Amber Danielson, and Deb Borton with the Thai Foundation, has resulted in some recommendations for downtown site furnishings. And so it is really hard to see that trash can and the pattern on the trash can in that document, so hopefully you can pull it up at a later time to kind of see what we're looking at. And so we are looking, or we are requesting funding to order for the Main Street phases of the downtown site furnishings, as we have funding to cover State Street, which is $25,000 and the T-Mobile grant, and then the rest coming from a Thai Foundation grant of $125,000 that was received. And so we have chosen a, a bench, a trash can, and then a bike rack to be consistent across State Street and Main Street. We do know that prices are expected to increase 3% to 5% as of January 1st, and so we'd like to get the order in as soon as possible, knowing that we have at least State Street to order for. But I would recommend that we use local option sales tax to basically order what we need for both phases of Main Street at the same time and to have as backup pieces in case something happens. I should clarify too that the request for not to exceed $120,000 for the purchase of site furnishings would also include benches, trash, a trash can, and bike rack for the Veterans Courtyard next door as well.
Discussion on this one.
I have a quick question. Jessica, how long are these, what's the lifetime of these items?
That's a good question. I don't, I don't know. I can tell you each of the benches weighs like 175 pounds, so they're talking about something that's a fairly sturdy thing. I think that they're, they're solid steel. I believe they are powder coated and that that's kind of how they're put together. I think our biggest concern is probably on the, the trash cans, just knowing that those are gonna come in contact with more corrosive liquids. But they have been, these same furnishings have been used in other places in Iowa, and there has not been any concern.
Do we know where they're made?
I do not. I have the spec sheets and an email that I can, I can definitely find that out.
Okay, if we could just get those, if we could get to a resolution phase, I'd like to see that information before voting.
Other council comments or questions?
Your honor, if I may?
You may.
Jessica, did we reach out to local fabrication shops to see if they could perform these, keep the money here in Marshalltown?
No, we didn't. We were looking at basically, you know, there were three different providers that we were looking at who do benches, trash cans, and your bike racks, and we're looking for something that was not going to be custom. I think that's one of the things that we've probably seen with the items that have, we've had for the last 15 years on Main Street, is that when those get destroyed, they don't get replaced because it's so expensive to replace them as a custom item. So we went with basically stuff that is out of a can. We, our group is very happy with what we came up with in terms of the design for both State Street and for East Main Street, or East and West Main Street, and would, would like to stick with this recommendation.
I guess I was really hoping to see involvement from the industries in Marshalltown coming up with designs that would accentuate the historical aspect of those industries, and you know, it would be easier for the bike riders, say, meet me at the Lennox Bike Rack or meet me at the Trow Bike Rack and things like that. So I guess I'm a little disappointed we didn't use a little more imagination and stay in town with some ideas. But I understand what you're saying about those other ones. But I guess I'd like to, like to see the money stay in town as much as we could. Thanks, Your Honor.
You're welcome.
Your Honor, if I may?
You may.
Deb, do you like these?
Okay, I do. And a little history that the, the, okay, sorry.
Yep.
Get a little comfortable in my chair.
For the 7,500 people at home watching.
The 7,500 people at home. Okay, so I do like this design, and it took many of us several months of going back and forth. We, you would not think that picking out a trash can would be so difficult, but it was probably the, the biggest homework assignment that I had when I came back from vacation in June. It was something that we, that many of us had lots of discussion about. Ironically, the trash receptacles and park benches and all of that that are on Main Street, I worked at the place that created those 15, 16 years ago. I'm the one that drew them out on the, on the, I don't know, CAD or whatever it was back then. So you know, I have a little bit of attachment to those because I walk by and I'm like, oh, it's kind of ironic that I work up here now and these are up here. But they are really, really bad shape, and I don't think that, I, I think these will hold up better with the controlled environment that they're created in. All the designs are exactly the same. I'm really happy with these. I think they're timeless. We tried to pick designs that would be timeless because we know that it's, it's difficult to get funding to replace these objects. When I replaced some trash cans on Main Street, I think it times kind of running together now, about two years ago, they were $900. The lids that we were putting on them were like $500. They have blown off, been beaten up. They're just in terrible shape. So I think that this design is, is very nice for our Main Street, very timeless, something that will hold up. I love the bike racks. They're, they're unique. So yeah, I'm, I'm quite happy with the design.
Thank you. And for those 7,500 people here, Deb Malizer.
Oh, with the Central Business District, yes.
Director, thank you. Okay. Other counselor comments or questions? Public comment? Anybody want to do staff direction and suggestion?
I'd be perfectly okay with moving ahead with what, what we've been shown here and get the information that Jeff is looking for.
Second.
Any disagreement with that? I think with the record can show consensus, and you have staff direction?
I would prefer, because this is using local option sales tax and bringing a resolution to the next meeting, that's where I would prefer a formal motion and a second for that action.
I'll take that as Mike, Mike's motion and.
I'll make a motion that we, that the city council accept design as presented for the State Street and Main Street project.
Thank you.
Second.
Very second. Okay. Roll call.
Schneider?
Yes.
Thompson?
No.
Walker?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Kel?
Yes.
Lottie Hoff?
Yes.
Very good. Discussion item number two, proposal for implementing a franchise fee. Floor is open on that one.
Several weeks ago, the city administrator and her executive staff presented to the city council to provide us a current state on the financial picture for our community. And some of the information that came out of that discussion was expected, key being that our streets are in dire need of replacement or repair. But there was also some information that was brought to our attention that I think surprised some of us, but also spurred on some really good discussion regarding how we maintain our buildings and utilize funds appropriately for, for adequate maintenance. But the next step that was glaringly obvious from that discussion was where do we go as a community to access those funds? Mayor Greer suggested that he form a small commission to examine the possibility of a franchise fee, and, and he did so. Myself, Councilman Schneider, and Councilman Isom gathered together a couple of different times to examine what franchise fees look like, what are the opportunities in accessing those dollars, and what kind of value can that return to our community in the long term? For the proposed use of funds, Iowa Code Section 384.3A provides multiple ways in which a franchise fee can be used within a community, and a city can pursue a franchise fee at no more than 5%. And through our discussions and examination of the, what we're up against as a community moving forward, that is what we're proposing, the full 5%. A 5% fee will allow the city to maintain current property tax relief dollars while also making drastic improvements in streets and operations. With 1% equating to approximately $525,000, a 5% fee is estimated to generate $2.625 million annually.
So the next part of this conversation is about the value that the taxpayer will get out of this franchise fee. There will be three main areas. One of the biggest concerns we hear from citizens, one of the reasons I ran to be here on city council is to improve our streets. So it provides a fund that we can then bond against and do some upfront street repair quite a bit. I mean, projected at $35 million worth of streets in five years. Operations, we've spent a lot of money on new facilities, and we don't or haven't budgeted correctly for the maintenance, so we want to keep those in top condition. So we would recommend about 10% goes toward maintaining our facilities, both new and aging, and then invest in the safety of our community for police and fire with additional training, the K-9 unit, and we really think that will help with retention as well. And then since to offset the property tax relief by charging this franchise fee, since we won't be collecting the lost on the, the energy, $350,000 to replace that.
So ultimate next steps obviously would be special election in the March timeframe, and with implementation starting next fiscal year or so as of July, obviously the main two key dates in that, but realistically, a lot of activity in the meantime, whether that be some of the education sessions being held in February, both of what it is and what the goal is to accomplish as far as being implemented, and then obviously working some deliverables that would be associated with the franchise fee as kind of laid out here in the memo. So website, handouts, anything else that may come up from an idea perspective as materials that can provide the public with an insight of what is or what might be the franchise fee moving forward. I won't go through all the dates, but kind of the key assets. So obviously, a little activity going here in the next six months as we kind of get things rolling and education distributed.
Thank you. Any council reactions, council, council questions or council comments about this?
Your Honor, if I may?
You may.
Can you guys give us, give everyone an idea of how many different towns have this already? I know there's, there's quite a few towns and even some small towns right around us that have it.
If memory serves me, it's in the ballpark of 200 statewide.
There is a website out there I found, Iowa Utility Association. So this was as of last year, calendar year, but it lists all the communities and the fees that each community has for gas and electric.
I can send that out. I didn't bring it prepared tonight, but that was something that I kind of took a peek at when we started some of the discussion is quantities and kind of what that average rate is both on the gas and the electric side across some of the different communities. So I'm happy to send and share that out, but all pulled from the website there.
Yeah, and just to reference, this is data coming from the same website, the Iowa Association of Municipal Utilities, and this was the information that they had posted as of October 19th of 2021, so now a year old. There were at least 209 communities with that in place at that point in time, and I would, I would guess that probably a few more have added it at this point.
Your Honor, if I may?
You may.
Hey, first of all, before you guys lynch me, I'm going to say, I appreciate the work you put into this. I really do. And I'm just like you guys. We need more money, or we need to be more frugal with the money we have. So my first question is, did you guys beta test this with some samples on some houses to see what this was going to do to the homeowners?
Talking from an incremental cost on your electric bill or your utility bill?
Because I just did two houses today, and I'm just going to share, I just picked two houses at random. So one of the things you guys want to do with this is property tax relief, maintaining a stable tax levy. You know, you don't, we don't want to raise taxes. Okay, so I picked a house in my neighborhood that is, and you got to remember, older houses have less insulation, have older equipment, not as efficient. So we're going, I'm going to separate the north side of town from the south side of town. This disproportionately punishes, that's a wrong, that's the wrong word, disadvantages the people on the north side of town. So the house I tested was 968 square feet with a budget billing of $134 a month, a little high for a small house. So that's $80 a month, or $80 a year, I'm sorry. $80 a year would be the 5%. Now, doesn't sound like much, but how that equates, getting back to your property tax relief, it would be better for that homeowner if you raised their property taxes 9%. That's a 10.4% increase in their property taxes because their property taxes are only $776. Okay? So now you're telling them, I'm going to take this $80 from you, but hey, we're going to keep your property taxes the same. Okay? So that's what we need. The other house I, I looked at was a house on the south side, which was almost 1,600 square feet, newer home, okay, and its budget billing is $117 a month. So you know, it's only a, and their property taxes are higher. It's a 1.4% increase is what the dollar figure, the $70 a month. So a new house, you know, one and a half times bigger is going to pay $70 a year. This little house in my neighborhood where there's some poor guy living is going to pay $80 a year. And getting back to the streets, this is that old argument, we, before the new council set, we raised the debt capacity level with the intention of that money going to the streets, but yet we didn't follow through on that this year, and we're going to talk about that more in budget hearings. So I struggle with this. I, you know, and we have problems. I don't think this is the way to address the problems. I think when we get into the budget hearings, if we have buildings that are falling apart from that work session where, you know, we have issues, we have to budget appropriately to fix those things. And, you know, I mean, we just can't go out and look for money. Something's got to give, you know, the, it comes down to wants versus needs. So I think a lot more has to go into this to, you know, you, getting back to what you guys said about the selling points, these public things, you know, if I can do one beta test real quick today, there's going to be other people going to do the same thing. We need to be prepared to sell it. This is a last ditch effort. It has to happen to build the town we want to build. So I, I commend you guys, but I think there's a lot of work to do before that first public session of education. So thanks, guys. Thanks, Your Honor.
Other council comments?
I guess I'll add some content, comment to that, Gary, and live in an old house, too, right? So prior to adding Insulation Matic, which I didn't used to have, and replacing a furnace and AC over the last five years, my electric bill is in excess of $400 a month, right? So like, I get it, disadvantaged, but to me, I guess somewhat of a decision I made, living in the house, I did. And unfortunately, to address some of your comments, like last ditch effort, I, obviously, I think this, there's been some missed opportunities over the years that have cost us and put us in the position we're in. Don't disagree. And I think this is trying to address a bulk of that. And personally speaking, I think without it, we'll continue to have missed opportunity and be in the same situation moving forward. So I don't think, I don't, I don't have another solution that's in front of me or being discussed or otherwise outside of tearing down a building that needs maintenance or firing staff or otherwise. And if those are the discussions that we want to vet, I don't think that, that's probably the direction that's going to be decided. And so at least, you know, some of the bullet points put on there, right, is there's real tangible value to this, right? And some of the dollars talked about, street specifically, $31 million, does take into consideration some of the increased funding that's coming out of some of the debt levies and otherwise it's being done. It's not strictly from franchise fee. So this is us getting together and saying, if this is a focus, we're going to do this, and we're going to do some more on top of it. So it's, it's both a little, a little extra juice of what we're already trying to put forward as a council from a direction and priority that we've stated and are trying to implement.
Other consellers? Mic's open to the public.
Mark Eaton, 1007 South 10th Avenue. I've spoke on this topic several times before. I'm hoping during one of these education sessions, someone will talk about the lawsuit between CAGNIS or Cragniss and the city of Des Moines and how a franchise fee can't be used to generate revenue, otherwise it's a tax. And that was a Supreme Court ruling, and I'm just hoping to hear more about that. Hope you add it in. Second, running a city is like running a business. You have plans. You, you have vision. You have strategic plans. You have five-year capital improvement plans. And we're running up against this wall because for the last six years, we've spent money on parks and not on roads and infrastructure. And now you're saying we need to borrow or we need to enact this fee to make the budget whole because we didn't manage what we were doing the last six years appropriately, in my opinion, because infrastructure is number one in a city's job and safety. Parks is number two, three, four. Sorry, Jeff. So I think this is a bad idea. Thank you.
Other public comment?
Lyle Heineman, 2804 Arnold Drive. I look at this as a tax. I have to back what Mark is saying. I hope you do your homework and try to come up with something different. I feel like the money was allocated before and not used correctly. Now, I don't believe that's the taxpayers' problem, so let's take a step back and come up with a different plan. Thank you.
Other public comment? Staff direction on this one?
Yes, what we're looking for tonight is a, a motion to move forward with placing ballot language on the December 12th agenda to formally set the special election for March 7th, 2023 for the consideration of the 5% franchise fee on gas and electric.
So moved?
Thank you.
One second.
Very good. Roll call.
Thompson?
Yes, bring it forward.
Walker?
Yes.
Hoop?
No.
Isom?
Yes.
Kel?
Yes.
Lottie Hoff?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Staff has this direction on that one. Down to the final discussion item, that's Brownfield's Program Update.
Good evening. Michelle Spahnheimer, Housing Community Development Director. So this is just a, an update to you. We're about a little over a year into our Brownfield program, which is a grant that we received through the EPA, started September of 2021. So yeah, just a little bit over a year. So just wanted to provide an update as, as part of that grant agreement. part of that grant agreement is one of the things that we do. And so I wanted to let you know where we're at. We have been developing our website. On the city website page, we have a Brownfield page. If you haven't looked at that, we try to update information about Brownfields in general, specific to the grant, and resources available to our community. We have completed assessments, Phase One environmental assessments on seven different properties. Almost all of those, I think all of those have been within the downtown. That's been our focus area is the downtown, recognizing that we have so many properties that we either owned or had acquired through different processes that we knew had asbestos, lead, and potential other contamination. So when we think about what a Brownfield is, it's those types of sites. So we have completed seven Phase One assessments. We have a Phase Two work plans completed for those properties as well, and approval for five of them from the EPA. A lot of these things take a lot of process going through the EPA for approval. We have completed field work as part of those Phase Two assessments on four of the five approved properties. So you may have noticed some activity that was happening in the 100 block of West Main Street, where we took down properties there. We did some soil testing and things. They also are conducting some sampling at some of our other sites as well, and they're waiting for 101 West Main to be demolished to do some additional sampling. So those are kind of our focuses on the assessments that we've been doing. We do have a community involvement plan that was created, and that is available on our website. We also had to have a quality assurance project plan, which is part of the grant requirements. Impact 7G is our qualified environmental professional conducting the majority of this work. And so they completed that and got approval from the EPA on that process. We have a updated Brownfields program brochure, and I'll leave these at our back table here. It was included in your packet and is available on our website, just informing the community about the program and what resources are available. We did conduct a survey specific to those downtown sites. Hopefully, you all participated in that survey or participated during the Be Ridiculous Day event when we did our community visioning. We received over 400 responses between the online and the in-person feedback that we conducted. During that, we still have teams working on going through that data and the next steps in developing site reuse plans. So we're fortunate to also receive a technical assistance, or we selected to participate with technical assistance through the EPA. And so we have a team working with the IPA under contract to do market analysis and some kind of further visioning in more detail on what our market can support for redevelopment of those two primary sites in the downtown. So that information is still forthcoming. I am hopeful that we'll see it just after the first of the year. We'll kind of have a report back that I can bring to you with more information on next steps. I did attend the National Brownfield Conference in August. Got a lot of great ideas and, and information resources from that event. There will be another one of those scheduled that's part of our grant training as well, next year, next August. And as I said, we're just kind of waiting on that continued development to come from Impact 7G and Austin Planning, who is the subconsultant working on our EPA grant for our downtown site. So that's kind of the next thing that you'll be seeing. We do have available, if there are owners that think they may have Brownfield site, that they're interested in information, they can contact me, they can fill out kind of an initial request form to see if they might be eligible on our website. And so we have information about that. So just wanted to let you know the program is going really well. We're moving along. It is a three-year grant cycle, so we're just a little over a year in, as I said, and we still have time to continue to work on that. Our focus, again, being downtown and kind of the Highway 14 corridor area, areas that we've identified as redevelopment potential. Entertain any questions, such as my hat.
Are there, are there any from Michelle?
Your Honor, if I may?
You may.
Michelle, I talked to the guys at Impact 7G. The question I forgot to ask them, how far down do they, were they drilling?
I have no idea. That's a great question, but I don't know the answer. Yeah, I know they have to get down to a certain level to try to, you know, check the soil. A lot of times what they're looking for is, you know, if they've identified, you know, a lot of times you think about dry cleaners or service stations or things like that. They're checking the soil for different contaminants. So I don't know for sure how far they have to go down, and I don't know if it has a relationship as to how far away things were or not.
I'd be curious if you could find it out and drop us an email?
Yep.
To see just how far they go for ground contamination.
Do that.
And then the other question is, so the ones we did, all those were, so far, those were city-owned properties. Is that correct?
Um, yeah, so we do have, we do have a couple requests in that we're working on that are, are private. Everything has to be approved by the EPA. So just because we want to do a site doesn't mean that it's going to be an eligible site. And so you have to think about what that redevelopment potential is. Like some of our sites even that we own aren't eligible because of the acquisition process that we went through even. So there's just a lot of different things that we have to look at. But we do have some private ones in queue that we've kind of started on.
All right, keep up the good work. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, Your Honor.
Anyone else?
Very good. That takes us to the public comment phase of the meeting, at which point I have to read this proviso. Members of the public may make comments on any item that was not on the agenda. Approach the mic, state your name and address, and limit your comments to three minutes unless I authorize longer. Direct your comments to the mayor and council as a whole. And the mayor and the council shall not engage in discussion or debate on items raised by the members of the public in order to not violate the open meetings laws. The microphone is open. Seeing no one rushing to it, it's 8:05 PM. We'll adjourn the meeting. Thanks for coming.